Good morning.
And we pray for our mayor and city council that will begin to come together, which is a good beginning, who will work together with great progress, and who will stay together for success. And God would pray that as you give the mayor vision, that he will present to the city councils for the betterment of the peoples from the east side, west side, north side, and south side, that it be done in a way that you will be pleased. Not only are they elected officials, but their chosen ministers to be servant to your peoples. We pray that you give them wisdom and knowledge when a difficult, tough decision have to be made, cutting the budget, infrastructure, and maybe hopefully not raising taxes. We pray for the citizen, that as they do and work together for the betterment of this community and this citizen, these things is done remind us as citizen when it doesn't always go our way, that we'll be reminded that these elected officials have family, we have to discuss and debate with them, that we'll do it, that the family member will not feel a backlash of malice and stripes, but love. We pray that you will continue to give them the knowledge and the wisdom to do this, as they will acknowledge you and you will direct all of their paths. And we'll give you the glory if you would come and heal our land and bring peace in the things that we endeavor to do. This we ask in Jesus' name.
I, Bill Gillespie Jr., solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support, that I will support, the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully and honestly, I will faithfully and honestly, discharge the duties of the office, discharge the duties of the office, upon which I am about to enter, upon which I'm about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me God, so help me God. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. I was told, I was mentioned numerous times by my wife and Chief Thompson to keep this short and sweet, so I'll do my very best of doing that. You know, we live in a great community. For me, for us to work together, because we are connected, the council and I, as soon as they are elected or sworn in, we are connected for the next four years. And I do swear to everybody here that I will do everything possible for myself to make us as productive, a productive and proactive Prattville. With that, thank you and please continue to pray for us and the country. Amen.
Our city council members will now take their oath of office in the order of their district. When your name is called, if you could come forward with your family, after you've taken your oath of office, please take your seat on the dais. Councilor Albert Striplin will be sworn in by Reverend Bobby Ellisir, Senior Pastor of First United Methodist Church.
I, Albert Striplin, solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, and honestly discharge the duties, and honestly discharge the duties, office upon which I am about to enter, of the office of which I'm about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me God, so help me God.
Counselor-elect Marcus Jackson will be sworn in by his father, Mr. Ray Jackson.
I, Marcus, solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will, the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen, so long as I continue as a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully and honestly, I will faithfully and honestly, discharge the duties of the office, discharge the duties of the office, upon which I am about to enter, about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me God, so help me God.
Counselor Denise Brown will be sworn in by Honorable Louis Colley.
Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. State your name.
I, Denise Brown, solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support, that I will support, the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen, so long as I can continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully, and that I will faithfully, and honestly, and honestly, discharge the duties of the office, discharge the duties of the office, upon which I'm about to enter, upon which I'm about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me God, so help me God.
Counselor Jerry Starnes will be sworn in by the Honorable Ben Fuller.
What else might happen? So it's a celebratory time. It's absolutely mild.
Yes, sir.
I, Jerry Starnes, solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen, so long as I continue to be a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully and honestly, that I will faithfully and honestly, discharge, discharge the duties, of the office upon, of the office upon which I'm about to enter, to the best of my, best of my ability, so help, so help me God. Congratulations.
Counselor-elect Richard Cables will be sworn in by City Attorney David McDowell.
I, Richard Cables, solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will, I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully, that I will faithfully, and honestly, and honestly, discharge the duties, discharge the duties, of the office upon which I'm about, office upon which I'm about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Counselor-elect Richard E. Stritchick will be sworn in by former Mayor C. Gray Price.
I, Robert E. Stritchick, I, Robert E. Stritchick, solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support, for the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, so long as I continue a citizen, thereof, and that I will faithfully, discharge the duties of the office, upon which I'm about, upon which I'm about to enter, to the best of my ability, so help me God, so help me God.
Counselor Laura Lee Boone will be sworn in by Dr. Travis Coleman Jr., Senior Pastor of First Baptist Church.
I, Laura Lee Boone, solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support, that I will support, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, as so long, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully, that I will faithfully and honestly, discharge the duties, discharge the duties of the office, from which I am about, for which I am about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right, we will call our meeting together. We'll start with a roll call. Counselor Striplin, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Brown, Counselor Starnes, Counselor Cables, Counselor Stritchick, Counselor Boone.
Here.
Thank you. We will start with the nomination for President of the City Council. Do I hear a nomination for President of the City Council?
Madam Clerk, I may question to nominate Albert Striplin as Council President.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Counselor Albert Striplin for City Council President, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Congratulations, Council President Striplin.
Thank you, councilors. Our second item of business is for the nomination of the Council President Pro Tem. This time, the chair will entertain a motion for nomination.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion for Denise Brown.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of electing Denise Brown as President Pro Tem signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, motion carries. At this time, we will move into the two agenda items that we have. The first item on our agenda is to set the council procedures for the 2016-2020 Quadrinium. Counselor Star, excuse me, Counselor Cables, will you introduce this, please? Yes, the ordinance. Oh, excuse me. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this?
It's our first day.
Ordinance to set council procedures for the 2016-2020 Quadrinium, Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Given that this is an ordinance, I will require suspension of the rules. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor of suspension of the rules signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous, the motion to suspend passes. We will now address the ordinance that is before us. Is there any discussion on these ordinance? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, the motion carries. Now, agenda item number two is a resolution to provide procedure and criteria for the establishment of council meetings, agenda, and agenda packet for the 2016-2020 Quadrinium. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this?
To provide procedure and criteria for the establishment of council meetings, agenda, and agenda packet for the 2016-2020 Quadrinium, so move, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign, the resolution carries. This concludes the agenda that we have before us. At this time, we'll ask for closing comments. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Look forward to the next Quadrinium, and I believe that Prattville is going to be well-served and by this council and this administration. Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
I am definitely honored and blessed to be able to work with you guys and to serve this great city of Prattville, and I'm grateful for my family and friends who came out today, and we look forward to doing great things here in the city of Prattville.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. I want to first thank you, thanks to my mother, father, Dawn and Jed, for their support in seeking me my second term. I wanted to thank the citizens of District Four for trusting me to serve another four years. I look forward to working with this council, the mayor, department heads, and all city employees. Also look forward to continue to serve the citizens of District Four and all citizens of Prattville. I would like to see this council continue to continue the city's debt while increasing our cash reserves. We will continue to provide premier city services and economic development, and work closely with the Prattville Chamber of Commerce. I want to congratulate Albert Striplin and Denise Brown in their new roles on the council. With this being Veterans Week, I would like to recognize all veterans and members of the Military Committee with the Prattville Chamber of Commerce. If you are a veteran or a member of this committee, could you please stand to be recognized? Shortly after this meeting, we will be dedicating a parking space dedicated for veterans only in front of City Hall. Please join us for this ribbon cutting. Thank you again, and I look forward to the accomplishments this council will make in the next four years to keep Prattville the preferred community. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Counselor Cables.
I do. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for coming out this morning. I am, like Councilman Jackson, very humbled and blessed to be sitting up here today, and I do want to thank the people of District Five for allowing me this opportunity and showing their confidence in their voting. I really look forward to the next four years, working with my fellow councilmen, councilwoman, and with the mayor and the department heads. This is a very great city we live in, and I was very fortunate to be raised here, play ball here, and learned a lot by growing up. We have some very kind, and very caring, and very loving people in this community. And again, I look forward to the next four years, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Counselor Stritchick.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. I am full of humility and honor to finally be sitting up here. But not at my election, when I finally won, Mayor Gillespie gave me the, hey, Robert, third time's the charm, so persistence is one thing. To echo what Richard's saying, this is an amazing community, full of great, great, wonderful people, with so much promise, and the possibilities are endless for what we can do here. I look forward to the next four years, to be, to serve our community as humble, and as honestly, and to be led by the hand of God to the best of my ability. I'm also very thankful for my dear friend, who I sometimes call my second father, C. Gray Price, Honorable C. Gray Price, for swearing me in, and his love, Ms. Julie Price, for attending today. I love my father, and there could not be here. They're here with, they're here above us, I know that. And Jerry, my father was a three-tour Vietnam vet, and I'm so honored to be here to represent him today. So my brother Larry, my sister Linda, my beautiful wife, Dr. Tracy Stritchick, and my son Will, and some of my daughter, two daughters, who are off at school, which I'm paying for right now, who cannot make air today because they have tests. I'm very thankful for their support throughout the summer during my campaign. Oh, I'm sorry, my sister-in-law, Teresa Stritchick, Lord, she will get me if I don't mention her today, I'm so sorry. But yeah, all you department heads, all you city employees, we're here for you, all you citizens, this panel's here for you, it's not about us. And to the citizens of District Six, I hope to continue on and serve you as best that I can, trying to make our district the number-one district in this city, and to make this district in this city the number-one city in the state of Alabama. Again, I thank you all, and I thank you for attending today, and we'll see at the reception very soon.
Thank you. Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. You may wonder by the time we get down to number seven what's left to be said, but that's the reason I'm sitting at number seven, there is always something relevant that I will be bringing to the table representing you. Thank you again for putting me back in this situation, I'm honored to be here. Thank you to my family for the sacrifices you make, I have a young family who has grown up learning that politics is not something in a book, it is real life. When the telephone rings and you're walking out the door, when mom misses a sporting event, there's a lot of sacrifice that goes on in the homes of the panel that sits here. So I'd like to thank my family for supporting me in this situation so that I may support you. My doors and my phone is always open, thank you.
Thank you. My turn. Thank you for the opportunity that you have provided me, and congratulations to each of you on your successful campaign. I take this occasion to remind all of us that while we are and I take this occasion to remind all of us that while we are and were elected from our respective districts, our area of service and our fiduciary responsibility is in the entire city of Prattville. We are not seven independent committees, nor are we nine warring committees, we are not committees. The mayor's in charge of the day-to-day operations of the city, and while it's helpful to know who to report a problem to, as a council member, we have absolutely no authority to instruct or make demands on any city employee. One of the secrets of being a successful counselor, I believe, is recognizing our department heads and supervisors were here before we arrived, and they will be here after our tenure in office. They know the personnel and equipment needs of their department, and department heads have goals they are working for, the best interest of the city, with the financial resources they have available. As committee members, I believe it's our role to listen, evaluate, offer counsel, and assist each department in moving their agenda forward within the financial capacity of the city. As you become more familiar with the city financial reports showing our fixed expenditures and our variable funding sources, you will see the limitations and financial constraints we have to work within. Prior councils have made several financial commitments on behalf of the city. Most of these commitments take the form of debt, whether bonds, notes, or designated reserves. These commitments were made for land acquisition, equipment purchases, infrastructure improvements, and economic development. There are also some contingent financial commitments prior councils have made, most of them relating to potential economic development projects, which we may be called upon to honor. I look forward to working with each of you as we collectively work for the best interest of all the citizens of Prattville. A listing of the committee assignments has been placed in your mailbox. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday evening, November the 15th, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. At this time, I ask Senator Chambliss to come forward and give our benediction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we go to the Lord in prayer? Lord, you tell us in your word to be still and know that you're God. We take a few moments now to be still at the beginning of this quadrinium, of this council, and this mayor. Lord, we thank you for the responsibility that you've placed upon each of us, to elect those that lead us. We thank you for these eight that have been elected to serve our city, to lead our city. Lord, you bring them together from all different backgrounds, all different experiences, all different walks of life, but now they have one thing in common, and that is that they serve you and the citizens of this city for this quadrinium. Lord, because of these different backgrounds and different experiences, they're not always going to agree. Lord, we don't expect them to, but we do expect them to disagree in an agreeable fashion, in a courteous fashion, in a manner that is pleasing to you. And then when the votes are taken, and the issue is settled, that those that are not on the prevailing side would accept the outcome and continue to support this city and its Lord, we pray for our nation. We have a really significant election tomorrow. We know that you are in control, we know that the end result will not be changed, no matter who's elected tomorrow, but that your will will be done. We take great hope in that, great comfort in that. But we also know that it's incumbent upon us to do our part. We just ask that each person, each citizen of America, would go and do our part tomorrow. Lord, continue to lead and guide the city, lead and guide the family members of those that are serving here, help them to be understanding, help them to be supportive, but just know, help them to just know that this is a calling by you for them for this time. In the name of your son's name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Councilors, I've been asked to ask you to please be seated after our adjournment so that we can have some pictures made for this event. Everyone else is invited to a reception in the lobby. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you. We are adjourned.